Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the committee of the whole meeting for February 28th, 2013. And if we could have roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Cinnick.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Finance Director May? May? Finance Director Park?
When did that happen?
I don't know. I wrote May down twice.
Cross-training.
Public Works Director May. Police Chief Mulhern. Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Director of Fire Prevention Kaufman.
Here.
And he brought his daughter Violet with him. Fire Inspector Bresnahan.
Here.
And Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Thank you. If you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I don't believe we have any open forums this evening, correct? We don't. So we'll move right on to reports. On Monday, we'll have the Cool Cities Award here at the meeting from the Sierra Club. And that will be on Monday. And also with the help of Police Chief Mulhern, I have a little information here. On Friday, March 15th, and on St. Patrick's Day, Saturday, March 16th, which isn't St. Patrick's Day, by the way, but that's what this says. Holy Trinity and Westmont is holding their first St. Patty's Fest. They will also be having their inaugural St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 16th, starting at 11:00 a.m. at Irving and Cass, ending at Dallas and Cass. Anyone interested in participating in the parade can sign up or get additional information at St.Patty's Day HT.org. And any additional information that you might need will be right there on the website. You can also call the church for information if need be. And that's all I have this evening. Clerk.
I want to remind everybody that voter registration for the spring election ends March 12th. So you have to through March 12th to get registered, and then it's over. I noticed campaign signs are going up, and I just want to warn anybody, if you put them in the parkway, they will be taken down. So be careful where you put your signs. They cannot go in the parkway. That's village property. So keep them in your yard. And the finance ordinance tonight is in the amount of $952,734.36.
Thank you. Attorney Zemanek?
Just to request an executive session of setting the sales price for the sale of real estate. And that's all I have.
Okay. Manager Cyril.
Just wanted to mention that we will be having a Finance Administration Committee meeting on Monday. Passed out that agenda to the board members. That'll be at 6:00 o'clock here in the executive session room.
Great. Anything else? Thank you. Trustees. Trustee Scott.
Thank you. First, I'd like to announce that the Westmont High School Fine Arts Department will be having their annual musical this weekend. It's, the name of the musical is Big. It is Friday at 7:30, Saturday at 7:30, and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Tickets are $8 for adults, $5 for kids, and seniors are free. And that doesn't apply to anybody on this board. And, but come out and see it. It's usually an outstanding musical, and everybody has a great time. And then next Wednesday, on the 6th, we have an Economic Development Committee meeting starting at 9:00 a.m. here at the Village Hall. And that's it.
Thank you.
Could you give me the name of the show again?
Big.
Big. And the Sunday performance starts at 2:00 or 3:00?
2:00.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, the Candidates Forum is March 6th here at Village Hall from 6:00 to 9:00. And either watch it on our cable channel or come here and watch it in person. The, isn't it Elmhurst this year? Elmhurst League of Women Voters will be chairing it. And they do, they always do a nice job. And it's a nice way to find out how candidates feel on certain issues and that type of thing. So don't miss it. That's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Klebenow?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Fleming?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Can I interject one other thing I forgot to mention? Monday night, we had the public
Oh, the TIF.
Meeting for the Downtown TIF. And our consultant was here, our Acting Community Development Director. They both made a great presentation. We had a packed crowd. And what I wanted to mention is, at the end of the meeting, and I can rarely remember a time where this has happened, except where people came and they wanted the board to do something, and they did something, but it was kind of negative. But there was applause. And I thought that was pretty remarkable. That, and I think that was testimony to the presentation and the information that was presented. And people were very supportive. At least that was the impression I got. So I just wanted to report that.
Yeah. All the way around, it was a very positive meeting. The questions were so good. And
They were.
You know, Khan did a great job explaining how it works. Shannon Malik was just wonderful. I just knew everything inside, outside, upside, downside. Knew everything there is to know about the TIF. So thank you to everyone that participated.
And should mention, and to remind you too, we've got a meeting tomorrow with District 201.
That's right.
Sit down with their superintendent and their president. That's, you know, we've had an ongoing dialogue with them about it, and this will be kind of our first sit-down. And I know Superintendent Carey was here Monday night, too, so he got a chance to hear the presentation.
So we'll be having that conversation tomorrow afternoon. Thank you. Okay. Second go around. Anybody else have anything?
Sorry.
Just kidding. Okay. Consent agenda. Do we have anything to pull from the consent agenda this evening? So we'll put that on for Monday. Unfinished business sprinkler ordinance review. Board to consider an ordinance amending certain provision of the building code and fire code regarding fire sprinkler and fire alarm requirements.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are again. I think we're, we worked the ordinance out.
Getting there.
Yep.
So maybe I'll just summarize the changes real quick, Chief, if that's all right?
Sure.
Based on the board's direction. You know, and Chief, I guess first, your suggestion was that there be a penalty provision added to the ordinance, which is now included, which makes every day that there is non-compliance a separate violation, which is a penalty of $750 for each day that a violation exists. And then there's a requirement that the fire detection and alarm system be installed, be connected to the 911 dispatch center, and be transmitted via wireless transmitters. All of that by June 30th, 2013, which is the current date. However, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. Is it just businesses in the central business district have the right to phase this in over a year, or is it all businesses?
Once you are
I think we should do it.
Become compliant.
Okay.
About 18% or whatever it is out there.
Okay. So, and the phasing in is, as you guys directed, the first phase, they'd have to have an agreement with an alarm provider, with the first phase completed by June 30th of 2013, the second phase completed by December 31st of 2013, and the final phase completed by June 30th of 2014.
If they choose not to be fully compliant by June 30th, 2013, then they have to enter into the phasing agreement with the fire department.
Correct. So attached to your ordinance is that memorandum of understanding, which is the phasing agreement where they agree to the specific phasing and the deadlines. I need to add to the ordinance, but you guys will approve that memorandum of understanding in form and authorize X to sign this every time on behalf of the village, so it doesn't have to come back to you. And I don't know if that person should be the fire chief or chief who's gonna, yeah.
Or his district. That's fine.
And then I had a question about the sprinklers. They, we have the guidelines in place from last time you analyzed this, when sprinklers are required. Restaurants, assembly uses, certain work being done to the premises. Is there a grandfathering of sprinklers other than those requirements where everyone, if, no?
No, I don't think we ever
No, we kept the same
We kept the same.
The same requirements, you know, with the tear-outs and remodeling. That was to stay the same.
Right.
And if everything goes according to plan, hopefully it will, if the TIF goes through, then I think it should become a case going forward that anything in the downtown district then falls under the sprinkler ordinance, and that's it. Because that's one of the reasons that you do this.
Well, it's to promote redevelopment, sure. So any redevelopment will then have a sprinkler.
Yeah.
Aside from that, then, if they don't meet these triggers, then there's no requirement to install a sprinkler.
Right. Correct. So that, the moratorium that expires on June 2013 would, that requires us to extend the moratorium requiring all-out sprinklers, correct?
Right. I think that's the way it is. We have to actually vote to extend that. And I think the term was two years.
I think that was my question, then. So
Yeah, because we want to extend the overall requirement for sprinklers for, what, 24 months? Or 12 months? And let the next board look at it?
I think 24 months, because that's going to give you time to get the program laid into place of what's going to happen as far as
But the trigger events still stay in place.
Thank you. Yep. I wanted to be sure that the trigger events would still stay in place.
All right. Can you repeat that for me? I was, mine was going in one direction while you were talking, and I apologize, but I want to make sure.
I have to remember what I said. The moratorium for the full sprinkler compliance will be extended 12 months?
20.
24.
24 months. See, we're listening. And the triggering events currently in place will remain in place. And then you can refer to those by the ordinance
Right.
The number in paragraphs.
They're already listed.
So that's for all businesses, this moratorium?
Yes, on sprinklers only.
Not the fire systems. And Chief, was our moratorium, how did we define what businesses are required to be sprinkled besides these conditions that we already have in the ordinance?
It was everybody that was in B1.
Okay.
The B1 district. And just to clarify a couple things, back to the alarms, there's two separate things there. It's the wireless with connecting the fire alarm after you do the fire alarm. Those two things had to go hand in hand, you know?
Right. So you need the alarm. The alarm has to be direct-connected to the dispatch center, the 911 dispatch center, and it has to be wireless transmission.
Right. And those are two different components.
Right.
Two different people, two different vendors.
Okay. But it's all subject, it has to be done by June 30th of this year unless they enter into a phasing agreement.
Correct.
And the phasing agreement has to be for both of those components.
Yes, but you won't enter into a phasing agreement if you only need the wireless connection.
Right.
Because there are some people with fire alarms, they just haven't put wireless.
They just have to.
So there's three entities we're discussing here.
Right. You may, if it, I don't know if it makes it easier for ordinance purposes, but in the chief's memorandum, he refers to three life safety systems by name. And I think that if we're consistent in referring to those by name, then we all know what we're talking about. Okay?
Yep.
That's good.
And just
It's part of the package.
Just remember, you know, to refresh your memory, our recommendation was 36 months, but whatever you want to do is fine with us.
24 is fine with me.
24 is good. The question I have for the chief is, will we be able to, in a timely fashion, contact the 12% of businesses across the village that are in this situation? And, you know, explain to, give them at least 60 days to know that they have to, by June 30th, enter into an agreement?
Yeah, that is our plan. We'll be able to do that. And we'll be able to follow, we'll make sure we follow through with everybody in that area.
Okay.
It's covered.
Just so, you know, we don't want people saying, "Well, nobody told me."
Yeah, because you have your list, right?
We have the list, and the list is actually going down. Let me talk a little bit about that.
Great.
You know, we've been getting a lot of phone calls.
Good. Great.
It's just
Are they pleasant?
To their defense, anytime you have to spend money on the behalf of municipality, not necessarily, you know, I don't expect cordial, but good enough. You know, it's not, violations in the fire code aren't like a traffic citation. It's like poll overpaid. It's, it's an ongoing process. And they've been knowing about this for four years. It's just another tool in our box that we can afford them, so perhaps they can solve the problem easier.
Right.
My opinion is by June, you're not going to have a lot of people that, maybe 20, 25, if I'm lucky. And then we may have to deal with them on a one-by-one basis.
Okay. Okay.
So that's
I've had Linda on at that point.
Pretty small group, then, doesn't it?
It does.
Compared to what it originally was.
And I just want to be clear that this is going to be all the businesses, not just the B1?
That's correct.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this this evening? Great. And everyone on the board, we're all comfortable with this?
Can I just make one clarification, just for continuity, if people were watching the last set of meetings? I think originally it was extended to June 1st of this year. And then you guys talked at the last meeting, make it to the 30th.
Right.
June 30th.
Push it to the end of June.
Which gives them, again, more time.
Yeah, because a lot of the paperwork just said expires June 2013.
Right.
So we decided to go to the 30th.
I went back and listened to some of the old meetings, and it was specifically talked about June 1st.
So we
So I know that was
Gave them an extra month.
Yep.
But you guys clarified at that last meeting, so
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Sirs.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. One-way roadway restriction, Travi Street. Board to consider an ordinance amending the times of the one-way road restrictions for Travi Street between Grant Street and Washington Street in front of Miller School.
Good evening. This was brought up by Village resident Mr. Reed, who we'll hear in a few minutes, requesting us to relook at the one-way restrictions in front of Miller School. So years ago, there was a different traffic on, traffic plan, I guess you could say, where school buses were pulling in front of the school. They have since redone Washington Street and the school's park on the side. At that time, there was a lot of traffic congestion and a lot of traffic issues and basically an unsafe condition in front of Miller School. And Miller approached us to see if they could get Travi Street one-way for restricted hours, which was basically the pickup and drop-off times for their students. And the traffic plan is that you can only go eastbound. You cannot travel westbound on Travi Street. And currently, the times in effect are from 7:30 in the morning till 9:00, and again, from 2:00 in the afternoon till 3:30. The morning pickup or the morning bell for the school rings at around 8:15, 8:20 in the morning. And in the afternoon, it rings around 2:40, 2:45 in the afternoon. We have since, speaking to Mr. Reed, he's done some figures in looking at times and traffic studies. We've had officers just, you know, watch it occasionally. And we also met with the school principal of Miller School. Miller School's principal's request is that the times stay in effect, that they not be changed. It's for the student's safety. Again, initially, it was for traffic plans. Her concerns are for the crossing guards and for kids coming to school. And when we get into a little bit more on the times, also for the kids who may be late or after school. Basically, after the bell rings at 8:20 in the morning, there is no more traffic, and there is no more pedestrian traffic unless there would be a student coming in late. And then it's an occasional car or it's an occasional student on foot. In the afternoon, when the bell rings at 2:40, we've seen a drop-off in traffic and pedestrian traffic after 3:00. And that's what I think Mr. Reed will suggest here, is we cut, he's looking for, I know in our talk was to try to cut down the times. The school principal's wish is not to have the times amended. Our staff and we looked at it, it pretty much comes into effect that from 8:20 on in the morning, there is no traffic. There is no pedestrian. Would 8:30 be a safe time within which to open it up? So you'd open it up a half hour in the morning. And speaking to the principal, at 2:00, the crossing guards lead to go out to the school and to their spot at Travi and Grant at 2:30 in the morning. She's concerned for there. But in the afternoon, I'm sorry, 2:30 in the afternoon, but when the traffic is coming, the traffic's coming into stage, getting ready, getting, you know, the lining and everything like that, they start arriving between 2:15, 2:30. And the one-way traffic is systems and that. Opening the street up at 3:00 in the afternoon, I don't know. That's, you know, just 15 minutes after the bell rings. I'm sure there's still some pedestrian, very not, granted, not a lot. But the vehicular traffic has pretty much exited the area. So I guess in talking with Steve Mann's staff, we're looking at maybe reducing the time to 8:30 in the morning. Again, keeping in mind what the school principal's request was, and just leaving the afternoon times to be as they are.
Comments?
What happens over at Manning?
Manning is a little different situation. They stay closed the entire day. And the reason they stay closed, and they also have the same situation at Holy Trinity, is that their playgrounds, their play areas are across from the schools. So they put up their times, I'm not sure their exact times, but similar, but they stay closed all day long. Mainly for that reason, because the kids occasionally, in and out of classes for lunch and everything. Miller School doesn't have that. Everything itself is contained. These times are put in just to assist with the traffic congestion in the mornings and afternoons. Holy Trinity is the same way. They close down the whole street, but the same reasons. They will go over and play in the Park District property in the afternoon, so they have kids crossing the street at different hours of the day. So they stay closed the entire day. Or, I shouldn't say closed. For Holy Trinity, it's a one-way direction. Or for, I believe, Manning School, it's a street closure.
Anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this?
Hi, I'm Bob Reed. I live on Travi. As far as the morning situation goes, I'm comfortable with that at 8:30, because I've watched the traffic. It's usually no traffic by 20 after, but 8:30 would be fine. But the afternoon traffic, I've watched traffic come there. They don't get their, they pick up, the bell rings at 3:46. 3:50, it's deserted. There's no one there. No one. Teachers, you know, in the parking lot, but there's no pedestrian traffic whatsoever. And as far as traffic coming westbound on Travi, it's a continuous. I mean, people go by that sign. They could care less, or they don't see it, you know? To ask the police to patrol this situation just for that time period, I don't see it happening. Because the traffic doesn't pick up on Travi going westbound until rush hour, like 4:00, 5:00 o'clock. That's when they're avoiding Ogden Avenue. The afternoon one, I see absolutely no reason for it, for five minutes' time, that the kids are in the buses on Washington Street and gone. And the buses, when they leave, they go straight to Ogden Avenue. They do not turn east on Travi. And like I said, it's a continuous thing. I see traffic coming west all the time. Now, for me, the inconvenience for living on that street, if I go to the library or I go to the bank, okay, I got to go three to four blocks out of my way, and so do all my neighbors, to come home between, till 3:30. And also, if we're going to, it started at 2:00. The kids don't get out of school until 2:45. You know, it's, I would think 2:30 would be fine to 3:00, something like that. Because the traffic is just not there for pedestrians. There's no one there.
Why do we start it so early?
The afternoon?
If the, if
Main reason is, is our recommendation was not to change that, is that the cars start lining up. And at 2:40, the bell rings off, and having, I've seen it, the cars start lining up a little bit earlier than 2:30.
Okay.
And so rather than having cars going both ways, and if the cars were coming from the east to the west, and the stack is past, say, Washington Street sometimes or so, then they have to go and make a U-turn and come back around. It was just figured that easier now. They would all come in from the west and line up. That way, they all could handle it without having to make U-turns. That was the only reason why. It is correct. The bell doesn't ring till 2:45. There's no pedestrian traffic. But it's just sometime the traffic starts. And I saw Steve moving. But we also don't want to go into quarter hours. We try to keep everything on the hour. You don't want to go to 2:15. 2:15 would be perfect, probably a little bit better. But then now, it's 2:15. Well, what time is it? 2:00? Is it 2:15? Is it 2:30? Our recommendation is we stay on the half-hours or on the hour rather than quarter hours.
Okay.
Plus two, and I talked before, the school, you recommended that the school get involved by putting out a sign. Tom told me that they've got a sign. Once in a while, I might see it there in the morning, and it's never there in the afternoon. It's never been out in the afternoon.
And talking with the school, they have their, we talked about that there's other ways to do it. We don't want an officer going putting the sign out. We used to have a sign on a larger horse chained to the "Do Not Enter" sign right there. And we received complaints from the resident who lives in that house. It's an inconvenience to them with the shove, not so much the snow, but an inconvenience with the cutting of the lawn, moving it around, and unchaining and putting it out there. So we got them, or they got a smaller horse, a smaller sign, and the janitor's supposed to be putting it out. Now, we were told that he puts it out in the morning. And it's kind of somewhat of an inconvenience. He has to go out there before, you know, 7:00, put it out there, and then stop his duties and go back out there at 9:00 and bring it back in, and then have to go back out there in the afternoon. We just didn't have a viable option, leaving it out there all day long since the street opens up and moving it over.
I remember Mr. Reed came in originally because he was concerned about the safety of the kids and brought a lot of this to our attention. The fact that the janitor has to stop his duties and either put out or go get the sign, I'm not really, it's not really a Yeah. So my only concern on this, and I can see if there's no traffic, why keep it for the long, long hours that it is. However, you know, people are, and especially little kids are creatures of habit. I would really hesitate to change this. You've got here till after spring break, but I'd even say by the end of the year. Because they are so used to whatever is in place, being in place, that they don't understand, you know, the people at the village change the hours. They'd be like, huh. So I don't want, you know, some little kid getting confused, and probably his mother more confused because she's not following what's going on.
This was our idea. The earliest we were thinking would be after Easter break. Give it time, time out there. Normally, and Steve can confirm this, with all the other schools, we pretty much do it at the beginning of the school year. That way, it gives the school a chance to get all new parents coming in, and all existing parents a chance to see it and a chance to get it, rather than, we're going to only do it for one month, maybe two. We would do it for the entire year.
And do it with a, you know, if you're going to do a new traffic pattern or a change. So at least my opinion is keep it the way it is for the next, you know, two and a half months, three months for school. And then, you know, change it for, as soon as June comes, it's gone, and then it doesn't come back that way next year.
And we've talked to the janitor and the principal, and he's supposed to be putting it out there. I don't know why, if he doesn't. I, we don't have anybody go and check, but we will reaffirm that with them to make sure that he's out there.
Yeah. I mean, it should be part of his duties, you know?
It is now, and she says he's been doing it. I personally, there's some times, I know Mr. Reed said, there's times I haven't seen it when I come in, and there's times I have seen it out there at 9:00 before he picks it up.
Why, why can't there be a permanent sign?
There is a current permanent sign. It's on a pole, and it's on the northwest corner. That is permanent. That is there. However, it's visible, but we thought the barricade or the, would be an additional incentive. And he put that in the street, so someone now actually has to go around it rather than just pass the sign. There's only the one sign there. It's visible, but, you know, it's, I know it's there. I see it, you know, and the residents do, but somebody coming through may not.
Chief, how many kids are on the bus versus walking? Do you know? Is it the majority?
I could try to get that information.
Majority is on the buses.
Majority on the buses.
There's probably about six or eight kids that walk from the school to Grant Street. And I know they go by my house. There's three, four kids. That's all that's on the street. And I think there's maybe two or three that cross at Travi and Washington. And the crossing guards are there.
I can get that. I know nowadays, more and more kids won't walk, and the parents will drive them and pick them up. It's just a thing of society. It's not only at this school, but it's all the schools. I used to take my daughter to down her south. I mean, the line of cars was phenomenal because kids don't want to take the bus or they don't want to walk. I can get, but I'll get that, I'll try to get that from the principal, how many school bus people.
When I was looking at the traffic, I had the coldest day. I picked the coldest week to do it. And there was like 29 cars that had come in in the morning. And there is a drive in the front of the school. They're not parking on the street.
Right.
You know, there's, yeah, they do. Sometimes they, if a rainy day or something, they'll come down. And he said they'll turn around. Yeah, they turn around on my driveway constantly. Because they come down Washington, turn around, and go back. I don't know. I, my feeling that it's in the afternoon to go to 3:30, I don't know if it's really that necessary. Because there's not
Well, if there's nobody there, then I don't think a change is even going to affect anybody. anybody. So, we could at least cut that off, so you can go to the library at three o'clock.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, you don't, you get used to it. And then in the summertime, it's really worse, because, you know, there's no school.
Yeah.
Constantly used to it.
Well, I agree with trustee Emery. I don't think we should make any change before the end of the school year, is to not confuse anybody, for one thing.
That's fine, I, I...
Yeah, because it's a grade school.
As you say, the kids, you know.
But as far as concern about the kids at the grade school, you know, the cars parking thing, and the kids away from the sidewalk, it's pretty well protected.
But yeah, I think it can get severely cut for next year, for, starting in the fall.
And just taking the deputy chief, our survey coincides with Mr. Reed's. After three o'clock, there was pretty much no traffic.
Okay.
Can we, can this be like what we do with the taste and stuff, and give the chief discretion to...
Yeah, that works.
You don't have to come before the board, just talk to the chief, and he'll work out what makes sense? Do you trust him?
But my concern, you know, we have the police, we have to pay them to patrol this.
Oh, okay. This has to be in an ordinance.
Okay.
So right now, it reads, instead of seven thirty to nine, changing it to seven thirty to eight thirty in the morning. Is that okay?
I thought we weren't gonna change anything till, in the morning, till next school year.
Well, yeah, the idea I thought was to vote on it on Monday, but not make the implementation effective until the commencement of the next school year.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay.
And just so the times are correct, changing the nine o'clock time to eight thirty.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That'd be fine.
Yeah, and again, our traffic studies coincide with Mr. Reed's. Yes, after eight thirty, there's certainly less traffic. There may be an occasional foot traffic, but there's no street traffic.
And then it reads two o'clock to three thirty. Currently, we want to change that to three.
Do we need afternoon, if they're, did you say, do we still need afternoon, though?
To me, I don't think we need it at all, to be honest, which I...
Our concern is you still have the, you know, right now, everybody coming in from the west, they're occasion, they do that, having the two-way traffic, I mean, and again, having to turn around, everything like that. I would still prefer them to come in from the west, and still...
Which, okay, you know, you just wanna make it to three o'clock, because they're gone. Three fifty, I'm telling you, it's deserted.
No, unless there's an after-school function, which they probably don't have that often.
They do not have.
Yeah, end it at three.
I think three makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll work with Director May.
And then, are you gonna start it at two thirty to three, or is it still gonna be?
Uh, two.
It'll still be two, because they'll be lining, you know.
Because if they're starting to line up before two thirty, it's gonna be a...
They don't get there till closing, ten, five minutes through. Believe me, they're, they got it down pat.
Yeah, and they usually come in at like eighty miles an hour, too.
That's, yeah, people say that, too. You know, it's a twenty mile an hour speed limit. Tell you what, you might as well be on Ogden Avenue, the way these people drive, and they don't even have time to stop at the stop sign. And I'm sure he's aware of that, too. That's been an ongoing thing, all thirty-seven years I've lived there, so...
Well, kudos to the Westmont Police Department. The other day, someone picked up her kids at Marker, and hit the hammer right coming out of there. Got her right there at fifty-nine.
Just when you don't expect an officer to be there.
It was great. I loved it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on, liquor license reduction. Board to consider an ordinance reducing the number of allowable liquor licenses to reflect the actual number of licenses issued by the village as follows. One, reduce class-three liquor license by one, and two, reduce class-two liquor licenses by one.
Is that a typo? In Westmont Restaurant, did not renew their class-three liquor license, so we want to reduce that. But it says Safran changed ownership and forfeited their class-one, so why would we reduce class-two?
I think Westmont Restaurant gave up their liquor license a few years ago. I haven't had...
No, what I'm saying is...
That's a typo.
We're reducing three and two, and we have gotten rid of three and one in the background section. See it?
Right, yeah, that's a typo.
So which one is it? Two or one?
Okay.
For...
Gotcha.
Safran.
Safran.
Was it two?
Okay.
So, yeah, for the background.
Forfeiting their class-two.
Correct.
Got it.
And they got the class-four.
Because we'd hate to have to have another, you know, session with you about the number of liquor licenses for each class.
He'd be bringing out the abacus and...
Too much math.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Next one.
Next one. Liquor license fee waiver. Fat Tuesday Progressive Dinner. Board to consider an ordinance to approve a special events liquor license fee waiver for La La Lee Bakery for the downtown progressive dinner, which occurred on February twelfth, 2013, in the amount of a hundred dollars.
Questions on that?
What's that?
Any questions on that?
No, I do, I have no problem making a waiver. My, my only concern is, I think we need to phrase it in a way that we're not setting precedent, because, for example, a hair salon could become part of the progressive dinner and ask for a waiver. Or, you know, I mean, there's any number of scenarios where someone could become a part of this progressive dinner, or not, or not, and ask for a waiver. So, I think if we can tie this to being, you know, the only, the reason we're doing it is because it was part of the chamber function, and this isn't gonna be the norm for anybody on Cass Avenue that wants a waiver.
That's fine.
For any special event.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, because remember Westview Hills, she always came in after the fact, and it got to the point where I was like, how was the sale, and yes, we'll waive your fee that was back...
So if it's associated, I would say, if it's associated with the chamber, then absolutely we would do that for any business. But if it's not associated with a chamber function or a not-for-profit function, I don't think we should waive it.
So basically, you just need to put the word in there, the chambers, Fat Tuesday Progressive Dinner.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, La La Lee Bakery, I think what I figured out was, who obtained the temporary liquor license, and it was La La Lee Bakery, because that was the premises where the liquor was being served. So, the waiver has to go to La La Lee Bakery, but the ordinance will clarify that this was part of a chamber function, and that's the rationale for it. Because you typically waive it for not-for-profit organizations that hold special events, and this is pseudo-not-for-profit, in that it's a chamber-related event.
Right.
So Mark's liquor license didn't hold out, then, because he sat there the whole time from Uncle Bubs. He has a liquor license that he can use to travel, and supposedly that is why he was sitting there, is because it was his liquor license, his doing, but...
Really?
It was, and that's the same as, we've done that in the past with the Knights of Columbus, when we had the Fall Festival down at Westmont Yard. We used their liquor license portability over to Westmont Yard to make that event happen, so...
That's what I thought was happening, because that's why Mark stayed there the entire time and never left.
Right. So, so Mark completed the application for the class-11 temporary liquor license, but the venue was La La Lee.
I gotcha.
So, would Mark's insurance, it would have been his grand?
Yes, it was Mark's insurance. It was Ram Shop Insurance that covered that event.
Then the waiver should go to Uncle Bubs.
Yeah, why would the waiver go to La La Lee?
Liquor license holder.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, the venue, because that would be like Westmont Yard for the Knights, and it's not. It's, if it's a port, if it has portability, it goes to the holder of the license.
Gotcha.
So we just change the name then?
Yep. Uncle Bubs, if we even need it, because of the portability issue.
Yeah, I was gonna say...
Well, you need the waiver of the fee, and we have to specify who's getting the waiver.
Oh, there's still the fee.
Yeah, forgot about that. That was the whole point of the waiver.
That's it?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Always good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, amend village ordinance number ninety dash one ninety. Board to consider an ordinance allowing the village to continue the administrative hearing system, along with the vehicle seizure and impoundment practice as a non-home rule community. Chief Mulhern.
As you know, the village has had administrative towing policy for the past several years, and with the loss of the home rule powers, we reviewed all our practices to make sure that we were, anything that was home rule, enacted in home rule, we can still continue to do. Deputy Village Attorney Anne Marie Lapparello Perez looked up, researched this issue for us, and discovered that we can continue this without home rule authority. There was a law that was passed, and when enacted and to effect in January of this year, allowing us to do so. However, several changes do have to take place, in the fact that we no longer have to send certified registered mail to the owners of the vehicle for a hearing, but we can do so through first-class mail, and we must notify not only the owner, the driver, but we also must also notify the lien holder, and also provide them the opportunity to have a hearing. We do have our hearings, they were in conjunction with the red light cameras, and our adjudicator still stays in place for this. However, we will be notifying each of those persons of a hearing that will be held on that certain date and time. And that right now, if an owner or a driver wanted to have a hearing, they had to come and request one. This law requires us now that we must afford them the opportunity to have the hearing, so we will continue our scheduled hearing, notify them of the date and time of the hearing if they so choose to attend. If they choose not to, they don't have to, it's not a mandatory appearance, but we will offer them the opportunity. And also reviewing the law, we can also add several offenses. When we did this program, we just limited it to four or five, you know, offenses to get the program up and running, make sure it's working. We've always had the opportunity to expand it, and the law allows us to do that as well, too. So we were asking the board to add that if you have a driver's license, permit, or a motor vehicle suspended or revoked, except for vehicles that, for an unpaid parking citation for emissions testing, that does not account. So if your license is suspended for, you know, not, not paying parking tickets, or for not complying with the emission test, that's not part of this. However, if your license is suspended or revoked for other reasons, it would be. The other issue is that we were adding that if the vehicle is used to commit, in the attempt to commit, or felony in violation of Illinois Cannabis Control Act, that we would be allowed to impound your vehicle. Driving or use of a motor vehicle in the commission of, or in the attempt of to commit in the offense of any Illinois Controlled Substances Act, your vehicle can be impounded. Driving or use of a motor vehicle in the commission or the attempt to commit the violation of twenty-four dash one, which is unlawful use of weapon, reckless discharge of a weapon, and lost possession of firearm, your vehicle would be subject to impounding. Driving or use of a motor vehicle while soliciting, possessing, or attempting to solicit or possess cannabis, or Controlled Substance Act, as defined in the Cannabis Control Act, on the Illinois Controlled Substances Act, would be eligible. Driving or use of a motor vehicle for a person against whom a warrant has been issued by a circuit clerk in Illinois, for failure to answer charges that the driver violated, no valid driver's license, driving or license suspended or revoked, or DUI under the Illinois Vehicle Code, makes the vehicle eligible for impoundment. Driving or use of a motor vehicle in the commission of, or in the attempt of the committing offense of retail theft, also would endanger your vehicle. And also, the use of a motor vehicle in the commission of, or in the attempt to commit any misdemeanor, any misdemeanor, other misdemeanor, or felony offense, of the Illinois Criminal Code of nineteen sixty-one, or Criminal Code of twenty-twelve, as amended from time to time, when provided by local ordinance, would allow your vehicle to be impounded. And then again, we talked a little bit, couple of changes, is that we must notify, have a hearing date within forty-five days of the offense, and we must notify the person by first-class mail within ten days of the offense of the hearing date.
So John, do we need to repeal our administrative tow ordinance, because it was enacted pursuant to home rule powers, and it's not on our list tonight, like the other three are, but repeal that ordinance, and then do a new ordinance with, in there, subject to giving police powers for impoundment, for all reasons that are listed under the statute for non-home rule community?
Correct, and that's all in the ordinance. I just have to check that the repeal language is clear, that we're replacing the current section with this new section, which was emailed to you this afternoon.
Right, do we need to specifically put on the agenda about repeal?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chief, the only question I had was the last condition for impoundment, and I don't have a personal opinion one way or the other, but it's driving a motor vehicle in the commission of a misdemeanor?
Yes.
That can be a very minor twenty-five-dollar fine-type offense, and is that worthy of impoundment of a vehicle?
It's tied with the commission of the crime, actually a misdemeanor crime. It could be retail theft or criminal damage to property. Any misdemeanor crime or felony crime, if the car is using the commission of that misdemeanor, yes, it's subject to impoundment. Most misdemeanors are, you know, more than twenty-five dollars. We're not talking village ordinance violations, we're talking actual misdemeanors in the criminal code.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public want to speak on this? Okay, we'll put that on for Monday. Professional services agreement, M.E. Simpson. Board to consider an ordinance approving an agreement with M.E. Simpson Company to perform village-wide professional leak detection service on behalf of the village. Director Steve May.
Thank you.
Slash Assistant Village Manager.
This is a engineering survey that we do on, every three years, of the water main system village-wide. It's a sonic leak detection system where they actually, through specialized equipment, listen for leaks that are occurring with the water main that aren't obvious, that aren't obvious leaks. When you have a water main break, most often, you know, it comes to the surface, it's very clear, there's something going on, you get called, you dig it up, and you repair it. But it's possible to have leaks that are, if you're in a, you know, an area with a lot of peat, or sand and gravel, that the leak could be occurring and running down into the ground, and we'd never see its surface at all. So by doing this inspection, it really keeps our, what we call unaccountable water, down to a very, very low percentage. We're under two percent village-wide. So, it's a three-year cycle, and that's coming up this year, and it is a budgeted item.
Great. Questions, anyone?
I have a question. On the paperwork we had, it keeps showing the date of 2011. Is that just...
The blank contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll correct that when we sign it after you...
Okay, that wasn't from a, like, three years ago, because that wouldn't have been three years. So we didn't, when was the last time they came in?
No, it was just the boilerplate contract that they started editing to turn into, to find the scope of services. So we'll fix the date.
What year did they come in and do this? Was this the same one that came in before?
M.E. Simpson, that's actually the only vendor we know that does this.
Okay.
They come from Indiana.
So it was three years. I was sitting there thinking eleven is only two years. That was throwing me off. I thought it was their last contract, that we were just gonna change the date on. So their other contract would be what, in 2010, I guess?
It was probably for a different community, I think.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Moving on, loss of home rule program adjustments. Board to consider an ordinance repealing the following programs that were adopted during the Village of Westmont status as a home rule community. One, motor fuel tax. Two, sales tax increase. Three, multi-family licensing.
Well, as we announced at the last meeting with the press release, these are actions that have been recommended as a result of the legal opinion that we got from Holland and Knight, and the board had asked us to put these on for ordinance action on March fourth, and be happy to answer any particular questions.
For number one, and number two, motor fuel tax and sales tax increase, perhaps Spencer, or maybe you, Ron, have a dollar amount of how much money is going to be lost, money that was gained a lot by people who don't even live in this community.
Two point, two and a half million dollars.
Well, no, I...
It's an estimate, you know, and it always depends on usage. We're in the process of refining our revenues for this coming fiscal year. What we talked about during our presentation, based on the past history, was, as trustee Fleming said, about two point one to two point three. We think it's probably gonna be a little bit less than that this year.
Yeah.
But it is a significant cut.
Right.
Without doubt.
Yeah, and much of that money was coming from people that live in other communities, so it's...
Well, the concept behind the gas tax certainly was to try to capture revenue from people coming through town, buying gas, and the home rule sales tax, you know, they apply, they apply to everybody.
Right.
But the idea is to try to capture from people that are coming and doing business here and now.
Not just hit our own community.
Wasn't part of the taxes, sales tax going into our vehicle replacement?
Oh, yeah. We'll have to talk about that at budget.
Yeah, we're all working, we're trying to work all that stuff out in the budget development process, and come up with some thoughts and recommendations.
The other, the other dollar amount that you're talking about, too, to add to that, say, two million dollars a year, is the amount of money on what we call the heads-on-beds tax, which is hotel-motel tax, which is, I think, the last Spencer was talking about, or Mr. Parker.
Six hundred?
Spencer, as we call him, was somewhere in the vicinity of four hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars. So you take that away from the general fund also, which cannot be used for general purposes, and can only be used to promote tourism within the Village of Westmont. So you tack that onto the two, two and a half million. So you're, you're pushing...
Three.
Big numbers. So you're pushing big numbers. And the unfortunate thing about this is those two items that became a big portion of services and things and taking care of things within this village were repealed because of people who rent in this town and people who don't own in this town. That's the one thing I hope the residents of this town remember.
And people that don't even live in this town.
People that don't live in this town.
Right. A lot of them don't even live here.
An active faction that doesn't even live in Westmont.
Right.
And they weren't quite truthful that what they were trying to get rid of was multi-family licensing, and they sent out all these horror things about, "They're going to raise your taxes," and all that. They weren't quite truthful that what their goal was to get rid of multi-family licensing. And the other thing is, even though our village manager loves to hear from residents, you need not call him and ask him why the price of gasoline hasn't dropped two and a half cents.
Because it's not going to change.
Because it's not going to drop. That two and a half cents is going to drop into the pocket of the station owner, not into Westmont's pockets. But it's not going to lower the cost of gas.
And it's greatly fluctuating anyway, all the time. So it's, you know, it's really hard to predict.
It's a moving target.
I mentioned, I think it was $650,000 at the last meeting, and again, we're refining our revenues right now. It's actually a little bit better than we anticipated this year. But as you said, that's earmarked now and goes in the hotel motel tax fund.
Yes.
The village attorney is working on giving us an opinion on how we can continue to spend that money, which I hope to have in the near future.
Great. Anything else on this topic?
It's kind of interesting, because you have all the car dealers, and they all have to get gas somewhere.
Right.
When those cars are being sold.
Right.
So a lot of those high-end cars get a full tank of gas.
Yeah.
Need to buy it, and those cars will be driven right out of town.
That's a really good point.
You know, if you spend $80,000 for a car, you better get a full tank of gas.
Absolutely.
Just a note there to the Westmont Auto.
So these items will be on for Monday, and with budget coming up quickly, I just question the board, fasten your seatbelts. It's going to be a tough one.
And I think the public should know that what, as far as the budgeting process goes, we're going to have to do what we need to do in order to continue to function and give the proper services to the residents of this town. And it's not going to be easy, and we all know that. But it is what it is. The voters said no to it, so, okay, here we go.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that there are going to be some surprises at things that people took for granted may no longer be part of the norm.
Yep. So, sorry.
Thank you, folks in Clarendon Hills that got rid of home rule in Westmont.
And Downers. Some people from Downers.
Yes, they were from Downers.
Thank you. Moving on. 2013 Legislative Action Program. Board to Consider A Resolution Adopting The 2013 Legislative Action Program Developed By The DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference.
This is something we do annually. It is used when we go down.
Oh, my apologies. Comment. Audrey wants to make comments.
I'm sorry.
My apologies, Audrey. I should have known you wanted to speak on that, and thank you.
First of all, I can't believe that I'm the only one up here. My name is Audrey Payne, 29 South Williams. First, a question, is it an all-or-nothing proposition? Those three items that are on that list, is that it's not divisible?
No, they all got to go.
They have to go?
They have to go. No wonder there's no question.
And the fourth one was the impoundment.
I thought the fourth one was the hotel tax. So we can't vote separately to attempt to keep any of them?
No. The only way we could, and the attorney will have to keep me accurate on this, but I believe the only way any of these items would be able to return would be by referendum.
In at least two years.
Or 25,000, whichever comes first.
Not like in April. It can't go back on a ballot for two years.
Yep.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
There may be some other taxing sources that the village has not tapped into yet, but that would have to be used for a very specific purpose, and can't be taxes that go into the general fund. So I don't know if the village would be interested in at least getting a list of other taxes that are available.
We would be interested, and I would urge the public to attend our budget meetings. We want to hear from you, especially the people from Clarendon Hills and Downersboro.
Sure, tell us how we can, you know, give us some other fine ideas.
What will happen is, once we do the budget and the residents see the services, that'll be cut.
I know.
It'll be up to them to decide.
Exactly.
You want them back. Can you live without them? And if you can't live without them, then we're going to have to figure out that way to do it, and creative taxing might have to be the way to do it, but I'd leave it up to the residents at that point.
Absolutely.
To sit there and say, "We're okay with not having this," and go forward that way.
Well, I would say as far as the tax and revenues go, if you come up with something with a non-home rule scenario, so long as it doesn't just affect the residents of the Village of Westmont.
Which will be very difficult.
That's difficult under this scenario. It's almost impossible.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you right now. You'll hear out of me on that one if it comes up.
We may not have a choice.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
If we go back over the population, that you can go to home rule, does it have to be voted on again by the...
That's another, that's a great question and another murky issue. It's my opinion that in absence of clear language to the contrary, that once we exceed 25,000, the village would automatically become home rule again.
So encourage your friends to move here. We only needed like 185 people.
Encourage children to have babies.
A bunch of babies, yeah.
Just those people that refused to open the door and... Yeah. Remember the ads that were taken out by a certain few, "Don't return your census stuff because it's the fastest way to lose home rule." Yeah, the same group thanks again.
So tell us what you really think.
And they used to come at our village meetings here, and once they found out that this is being repealed.
Maybe in four years, they'll run for the White House with all their grand theories.
I think they could use help in Washington, but not that kind.
But they'd have to walk.
Anybody else have anything on this topic before we move on? Again, my apologies for not doing that. Okay, let's go back to the 2013 Legislative Action Program. Manager Cyril, that was just sort of...
This is an item that we look at each year that's developed by the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, and it provides guidance to municipalities in terms of our legislative priorities when we communicate with our state legislators. The conference is active in putting together drive-down programs to go down and talk with our legislators. There is one planned in May. They've also changed the program slightly, so they've been sending mayors, groups of mayors, down on a more regular basis to try to have more contact and continued contact with our legislators. This document is available on our website, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about the content of it. You can download the PDF, and it's under our agenda, under this agenda item. But I'll just mention that the way this document is divided is, and this is the way it's done every year, there's two categories. They have what they call legislative priorities, and then they have legislative position statements. And legislative priorities really form the list of the things that, when we go down and talk to our legislators, these are the things we try to stress as critical, critically important to us as municipalities. And I'll just kind of read these very quick so people can get a flavor for what, and some of these are things that, you know, we talk about each and every year. Under critical priorities, the number one is to protect the authority of municipalities to manage our municipal funds. And I'll point that out, that there is legislation, I believe, that was just passed in the Senate, where they're going to be borrowing from our, I think it's our sales tax. The IML has said, "We don't see that as an impact on the receipt of the sales tax, but we see that as a very, very dangerous process." It's never been done before. So this is, that's an example of the kinds of things that we're very concerned about. I mentioned IML, that's the Illinois Municipal League. That's the other big organization that we belong to that also helps try to protect municipal interests in Springfield. So they share a lot of these same values. Also, removing the sunset provision on the Wireless Emergency Telephone Safety Act. As many of you know, we've developed this new StarCom interoperable system in the county, and a big part of how that's funded in the 911 system is funded through this particular act. And if this sunset clause is not addressed, then it goes away, and that creates a funding problem. A reoccurring theme the last few years is the whole pension reform. Many people have read a lot of the publicity that's been in the papers about public pensions. There's a very detailed list of ideas that the conference has developed in this document that I would urge people to take a look at. I know that there was a report, and you'll get an executive summary in your packet this week, and it's available in the other room for the board, that the state just did on the health of our public funds like the IMRF and the state employees' funds. So that may be something you want to take a look at, but that executive summary will be in your packet tomorrow. We also have on there, and this has been on their last several years, is amend the Public Safety Employees Benefit Act, which is one of those situations where I think it had a great intent in terms of providing a benefit to our public safety of employees, but the way it's been interpreted, it's actually costing the taxpayers more money than that was intended, and we've been working with the General Assembly to try to get that amended for a couple of years now. Those are the critical priorities. Under priorities, we always talk about creating more equality in terms of labor relations. I won't say too much more than that. It is something that has created some of the pension issues that we have these days is because we feel like there's been some things that have happened in Springfield that frankly, one of the comments I heard one of the legislators make at one of our meetings a couple of years ago was, "They came to us with an idea to enhance something in the pension fund. We didn't think it cost the state any money, so we didn't think there was any impact. We didn't see any reason not to prove it." You know, and the mayors tried to explain, "Well, okay, maybe that doesn't impact the state, but you're impacting the taxpayers and the local people that are supporting these local pension funds." So it kind of relates to that. We've had on there a priority to support the Western Access in O'Hare. We see that as a very significant regional economic development issue, and it's something the conference has supported for some time. Limiting Commercial Freedom of Information Act responses. We're all in favor of transparency in government, but we've seen some abuse with some of the changes in the FOIA Act in recent years. We've gotten some of those things changed, but that's something that we continue to work on. And protecting the public right of ways and advance the modernization of public utilities. This relates to a couple of different things. You know, the whole issue of deregulation of the utilities, and now you've got ComEd looking at smart meters and how that's going to impact taxpayers. So there's a lot of detail in here. If people are interested, you can download this document. And then I'll just finish by saying the legislative position statements that we consistently have is protect municipal revenues, eliminate the barriers to local management of labor and personnel, and trying to preserve and respect local authority, which ties into something that I've talked about before, the whole concept of unfunded mandates, and kind of relates to some of the pension issues. And then something that I hesitate to bring up, given we've already kind of talked about it this evening, but removing barriers to non-home rule authority. There are some things that just seem to make sense that maybe it ought to be extended to non-home rule communities, and that's something that the conference is always looking at each year. And I'm not talking about things that necessarily involve tax increases. One example that's been talked about the last few years is the rule regarding hotel motel tax funds. You know, allow non-home rule communities to use that fund, those funds in the general fund, and not restrict it. You know, that doesn't cost the taxpayers anything. In fact, it helps, you know, the operations of the municipality. So that's kind of a quick summary. Like I said, the document is several pages long. It's on our website, and I would urge citizens that are interested in being engaged to download it and take a look at it. But we ask for the board to approve this by resolution each year to give staff some direction when we're dealing with the ongoing annual pieces of legislation and positions that we want to take and communicate to our legislators.
And interestingly, there's the allow crime-free housing regulations for non-home rule municipalities, which would include licensing of multifamily units, which is a bill that was actually proposed in committee in some form, and I think got pushed off given the other legislative priorities, but it's already on the radar, so it'll be interesting to see where that goes.
Very good.
Take that.
Any comments from the board? Anybody from the public that would like to comment on our wonderful state government? Okay, moving on. Term limits on elected officials. Board to discuss the adoption of term limits on elected officials. And I believe the attorney has information on this, of course.
Great. Just that this is something that would be accomplished by a referendum that can be voter-initiated or village-initiated. If you were to consider a village-initiated referendum, you should specify what the term limit should be rather than an open-ended question, such as no more than two consecutive four-year terms or one consecutive term. I know in some communities, they have an unwritten policy that no one should serve more than one four-year term, but not strictly enforced and was not done via referendum. That's all I...
Comments?
I was the one that brought it up, so I'll dive into it. I just, I think that it's something that needs to be considered, and I hope that we would put it in as a referendum, because I think you need to see a change in your officials going forward. I think sometimes complacency sets in. I think sometimes, and it's a problem not only maybe at local levels, but it's more of a problem at your higher levels within government. Every state's a perfect example. They get comfortable, they get elected, they start campaigning to get reelected, and they don't care about what happens. So my initial thought was four years. It would speed up things, make you take a great interest in what's going on, and push stuff, and see to it that it gets along. And talking to some of the fellow trustees, you know, two consecutive four-year terms, I think would be more reasonable. I think the question would be, would you, after that, after you served two consecutive four-year terms, if the residents were to vote it that way, are you completely done with your service, or would you be allowed to take two years off and come back and run again? See, that's the other question.
The meaning of two consecutive four-year terms is key is consecutive.
Right.
If, like dispelings right now, Mayor Tony Aretia did his two-year, two consecutive four-year terms, took four years off, and is back on the ballot for mayor again with two of the aldermen. So obviously, it's semantics. It depends on, you know, if you want to limit it to eight years, eight consecutive years, period, then, you know, she'll serve as an elective official for no longer than eight years.
Is that for the one position, or is that elected for any position?
Depends on what you want to do with it.
Specify.
You also have the issue of someone being appointed to fill a vacancy in office, where you have potentially the ability, if there's a trustee vacancy, to go outside to the public to fill that, if it can be done prior to an election.
On the one hand, I think, well, you know, in local government, maybe people should decide if, you know, if somebody's not doing their job or getting complacent, it's up to the voters. That's the one hand. On the other hand, there's more of an incentive to get things done if you have, you have a sunset clause on your own self. And plus the fact, you know, nothing, trustee Scott and I were talking about this while we were sitting here earlier, but nothing is more disturbing for someone to hear that is pro-progression, progressive than the statement, but that's the way we've always done it. And so I personally think that if you're in a position where that's the way you've always done it, you get so used to it that you also get blind and resistant to doing things any other way. So I'm in favor of term limits for Westmont.
This is probably the only profession where this should probably come up. When you... When you look at policemen, or you look at doctors, or you look at anything else, the more experienced, it's usually the better, and that used to be the way it was in government. Of course, there's always gonna be that exception, and there's always gonna be those guys that are just gonna screw it up, but it takes two years just to even learn this job.
Sure does, and sometimes...
Sometimes three, because you don't...
Sometimes four, and they still don't know it.
Right.
I mean, we've seen...
Stop.
No, not you guys. Not you guys.
You almost got it. You're almost there. But that's the truth, and so when you've got two to three years to learn the job, and then, let's say at four, you're gone.
Right.
Just when you're starting to get a handle on it.
That's why I said...
And then another new...
I'm here at six, and I'm just starting to feel comfortable.
Exactly, yeah.
Ah, don't get too comfortable though.
No, 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 but I have no intention of it. But the object is, is, but that's, that's what it is. So, you know, in earlier years, I sat there and I always thought, "It was better, the longer you're here, the better." Unfortunately, that's to the point now where it's throw the baby out with the bathwater because the way this state is, the way people are in non-voting, and it's just, I think it's the only way now. I wish it didn't have to be that way.
And part of that's a little scary, too, because, you know, when you look at a town like Clarendon Hills, I believe it was Clarendon Hills, nobody wanted to run. They had to go out and recruit people.
Right.
Were those people the best? I'm guessing maybe not, because they didn't think of it, you know.
But it also forces the residents, and if they have to recruit, somebody's gonna have to get involved.
Yeah, big time, big time. And it's, you know, like you say, throw the baby out with the bathwater, that's, that makes a lot of sense, but it's still scary to think that you might end up, and I'm not against it or for it either way, yet, I haven't thought about it, but, you know, you just don't know what you're gonna get.
You never do.
And the other thing is, it's like, okay, I've been on the board for four years, and, you know, things unfortunately move at a snail's pace, even when you're moving it as fast as you can.
Right.
Our comprehensive plan, our TIF plans, had so many steps to follow, and they all had to be X amount of days that it was like, "Come on."
Like, "Let's get going."
That, you know, I was happy to see that they're going to happen before my four-year term's over. So, but I think eight years, you know, you better be able to get something done. And, you know, it could be even like, you know, with the TIF project, developers may come in and go through presentations and back out, and, you know, the economy tanks, and look at what happened for years, and we're still obviously having crawled out of that rut, but I think eight years is appropriate.
No, I'm not for term limits. Term limits to me is every four years when there's an election, and hopefully, some people have the sense, like I hope I did now, by not running and trying to get new blood in here, the thing I worry about is who may run, who might run, and it scares the heck out of me, because I love the town, and it really bothers me on who might be sitting in this seat, who, you know, wants the power trip and not care about the town itself. And it scares the heck out of me. To me, the term limits always came. I mean, I was on four years, I lost, I got back on after four years, and so to me, term limits was the voters who decided the term limits for us. And evidently, the only thing I could say is, during the four years off, maybe somebody didn't like, the people didn't like what they saw on the board, and they term limit them out and put me back on. Maybe they decided I was the best after those four years. I don't know. I still believe in, as much as I know we have so much trouble with people not voting, I still think the term limit is the voting. And, I mean, we've had some great people that I can't knock, that had been on the board for 15, I loved Betty and a lot of the people who've been on the board for a long time, and it worried me on who might have been on after, you know.
Yeah, I kinda...
I think part of it...
Eddie Chepers, I think, and Downers, a beloved mayor over there, too. Vivian, Vivian Lund, was that her name? Vivian Lund, the mayor.
One of the hardest things to come to terms was is, you think nobody can do it, and you just couldn't, how could possibly anyone do this job as well as I do?
Well, I know they can't when I leave.
But I think that the voters are also smart enough to see through the one pitfall, and that's if, if somebody gets a cause and they run to be on the board. Luckily, we don't have wards and aldermen where you have your own little fiefdom and that's pretty much all you care about. We have what I think is a better system, and everybody who runs for the board, if all you have on your mind is your own little, your own little pocket of Westmont and your own little issue, I hope the voters see through that, because then you don't belong on the board. When, when I ran, Pat, one of the best pieces of advice that you gave me when I ran was, "Make sure that people know you are paying attention to the entire town. You have to know every corner of the town geographically, and you have to pay attention to every corner of the town, and you have to, you have to want the best for every corner of the town." And that's absolutely true. So as long as you can elect people like that and have them for eight years, I think you're doing well.
Yeah, we should do it for everybody, though, not just the trustees. I think every elected and appointed position, all the commissions, clean, I mean, I should all, I think if we're gonna do it, do everything.
Rotate people through.
You can't pick and choose.
I agree.
New blood everywhere.
But there shouldn't be a problem having somebody come back that might have been on, whether it's, you know, as long as they've been off for two years, because, like I said, they may have, but yeah, the consecutive part, I, you know, I still believe, you know, that there's a lot of truth to, and these are the voters, some of these voters are the ones who knocked us out of home rule, so, you know, you can put truth in votes.
That's right. I'm not, I'm against term limits. Just changed my mind.
No, Clarendon Hills doesn't vote here.
No, it's, it's a tough decision. It really is, but I would rather, I prefer not to, because I just, gives me the chills on thinking of some people who might get involved and wanna sit...
I, I think it's interesting that we've not been hearing this from the residents. I've never had a resident approach this.
Because they're afraid of you. You're like the Mike Madigan of Westmont.
Is that right? Is that what they think? I love that. Is that true? Audrey?
Yeah, because you've been here so long.
But see, I think we don't hear from them, because...
That's the only quality, though.
They have to...
Yeah, really, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Because we have the term limits, they can vote us out.
I guess you're right.
And that's why, to me, it didn't make any difference. I mean, the people who've gotten reelected for their third or fourth term, you know, they evidently had enough people that really felt they should, you know, serve those term times, so.
And the problem is, is, you know, what, what would this town do without Ginny, and what would it do without her?
I was just gonna say, what would we do with Ginny if we put term limits out of clerk?
That could pose a problem, Mr. Nero.
She'll be grandfathered in.
Ginny, Ginny will be 106.
Be the only time I would agree with grandfathering. That'd be the only time.
Ginny, Ginny at age 106 will be calling the roll.
We'll have to remind her who's here, but it'll work.
It won't be the first time.
So it sounds like the majority's in favor of this. I think the question is implementation, since it's a referendum question, and we can't get it on an April ballot because we're too late for that. We're looking at whatever the next election is.
What's this gonna cost to put it on the ballot?
What's it cost?
You have to pay for it?
No, zero.
Okay, as long as we're, okay. I thought there was always some fee attached to get it in there somehow, somewhere.
So it can't go in April?
Or November.
Boy, we are right there with these issues, aren't we?
Yeah, you guys are on top of it. So...
Because we're doing more important things.
Well, then I guess it'll be up to the next board.
I think the question, well, one thing I'll look into is, one, when's the next election, and, two, how early can you vote to place something on the next ballot? Is it something you guys can do before you leave, some of you leave office? I'll have an answer for you by Monday evening.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Anybody from the public want to speak on this topic? Don't you have anything to say, Audrey?
I knew I could count on you. I knew I could count on you.
Audrey Payne, 29, South Williams, want to abide by the rules. So I've lived in Westmont for 10 years, and the same players have been in place for 10 years. And if there isn't a term limit, those of us who, at the time, I wasn't connected at all, I've only recently become connected, so for eight years, eight and a half years, I looked at this and thought, "What's gonna change?" Nothing's gonna change. If the same people are running the show over and over, you get, you get apathetic. That's number one. Number two, the people who are voting are the zealots who will continue to put the same people in if we don't force change.
It's the 2,700 people out of 13,500 registered voters.
We don't force some change, then the rest of us sit back and say, "Yeah, it's the same, yeah, yeah." And that's not, and that's wrong. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be that way. Our downtown looks the way it does, because...
You said you've been here for, what, 10 years?
10.
Okay. Four years for her, two years for him, I've just been on for eight years, so basically the board has been rotating, six years for them, so the board has been rotating.
I think Lee and I are the longest ones on the board.
We haven't been the same players.
Yeah, we've got, we're, we're, say we're two tigers, so...
Yeah, Lee, Ginny, me, the mayor.
I didn't know that.
I think, I've got 12.
Yeah.
You'll have 16 when you're done, correct?
When I'm done, and I am done.
It'll be four terms, and you'll still be going, so...
She's got 20 something already.
And I know that it doesn't... Three brand-new people.
I have to agree with what, I have to agree with what Audrey's saying, because you have such a small composite group in this town that votes, maybe it would be a good thing to say, "Tch."
Let the voters decide it.
You know, but you have that, you have that group that just...
If there's no term limit, it kind of kills the conversation. If the term limit, if the term has to end, it at least generates conversation. You might not get more people voting, but at least it stirs up some interest.
Well, and it might generate some interest.
Right.
For people to get involved.
And Pat, there may be people out there that feel the same way you do, and it'll be at the referendum where they say up or down on it, and...
Stranger things have happened in this town.
Well, we're gonna have, we also changed out, because, you know, the three of us aren't running, so, I mean, you got half a brand-new board coming in already, so if you add term limits, it's gonna be every four years, or every two years.
No.
Or, no, every eight years.
Eight.
It'd be somebody out.
Eight years.
And the other thing is, the other thing is the, is the power thing. I know it doesn't apply in our village, I've never seen anything like it, but when you get, you start to act like Blagojevich and get, take, take too much control.
And do pistachio commercials?
Very good. Thank you, Audrey. Anybody else?
Thank you, Audrey.
Okay, so we will...
Will this be an ordinance directing this to be placed on the ballot next fall?
No, I think at this point, we'll just leave it on for discussion, if that's okay, for Monday, so we find out whether it can be placed on the ballot this early.
Okay.
And then it can be on, assuming this board can take action, we'll put it on the next set of meetings for an official vote, and you guys can flush out what the wording should be for that referendum question.
Yeah, because certain referendums have time, you know, and all this, but this falls, this is, you know, like, there's, this is the general one.
It's long-term governing officials making it even more difficult to try to allow the public to have more of an interest.
Uh-huh.
Is exactly what it is.
Yep.
Make it a job, so you can live off it.
Take your 8% pay cut, which is $1,200 a month.
Okay, so we'll have an answer Monday.
Okay, this will be in. Okay, we will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of setting a sale price for the sale of real estate.
Already did, Emery.
Second, Nero.
On the question, kind of unrelated, but I emailed ordinances to everyone this afternoon. Did you get them? Because I got a message failure on my phone.
I don't know.
I'll tell you right now.
I haven't checked my emails since early.
The check did about, what time did you send them?
I don't know.
Because I didn't have them like at 3:00.
3:30?
Nothing's been you all day, yeah.
No, don't have them.
It said file too large, so perhaps the PDFs...[1757.61]